Okay, we're gonna bring the meeting to order. We are expecting a couple of board members to join tonight. I want to thank everyone for coming out tonight. Show of support, thank you very much for making the effort. Move the meeting. Eamon, all in all?
Yes, Elizabeth will not be here and our other two board members will be. And I expect one to be here also.
Yep. If we could then, I'd ask for approval in minutes of the previous meeting on February 24th.
So, who?
Second. Any second questions?
No.
Nope, all in favor? Any nays or abstentions? Under adjustments to the agenda, we are adding one adjustment to the agenda to have an executive session for tonight. After the executive session that's already on the agenda, we will be adding an executive session to discuss negotiations between the RSU 22 Board of Directors and EA 22 Education Association.
And we're also now deleting 12 A and B, the community foundation.
Table. So before we begin, I would like to make and read from the following statement. "I am speaking tonight on behalf of RSU 22 Board of Directors and in response to many inquiries regarding the Board's ongoing negotiation with our teachers. Over the past several months, community members have expressed their concern about the progress of negotiations and questioned the Board's bargaining objectives. We also understand some community members have grown frustrated with the Board's lack of public comment and response to community questions, which in turn may have led to a perception we are not listening to community members or our teachers. This is not true. Please understand labor negotiations are conducted in private. The Board has always respected its obligation to keep negotiations confidential. However, negotiation discussions have now become public through the use of social media and as a result, the Board feels compelled to explain its position to ensure all are fully informed. From the outset, it has been the Board's intention to increase pay for our teachers. Like many of the people who have spoken at Board meetings, we understand and appreciate the desire to advocate for our teachers. We too are friends and neighbors with the teachers. We too have children who benefit from the commitment and dedication that is evident in so many of our teachers. However, the realities of economics and state funding formulas play a limiting role and the collective bargaining process is seldom straightforward. As many of you are already aware through social media, the issues remaining in dispute between the parties are salaries, health insurance, and the merit pay system. The following is a summary of the Board's last proposal with respect to each of these issues. The Board has proposed a salary increase over the teacher's 2015 pay of close to 9.3% over the three-year term of the proposed collective bargaining agreement, where 9.7% is compounded. The result is that teachers will receive an average increase of approximately 2.7%, 3.1%, and 3.5% each respective year. Over these three years, teachers will receive an average of slightly over $4,700 in increased salary. This amount would vary for each individual teacher depending on where they are on the scale. As an important part of its salary proposal, the Board has listened to the association regarding the structure of that salary scale. The association concerns include the fact that it takes 25 years to get to the top of the scale. Additionally, they express concern the existing structure results in years the teachers do not receive a salary adjustment as they progress through the scale. In response, we have proposed to reduce the number of steps on the salary scale, resulting in increased lifetime earnings. The Board has also proposed to make adjustments within the scale to ensure most teachers will receive a step increase each year of the contract. The Board has proposed to keep its current health insurance contribution rates unchanged over the course of the contract, up to a maximum increase of 5% in annual premiums each year. This means the Board would continue to pay 100% of the teacher's coverage and 70% of the additional cost of dependent coverage, so long as annual premiums do not go up more than 5% each year. If the increase in premiums is higher, teachers would be responsible for that additional cost. Finally, in response to the association's concerns, the Board has agreed to remove the merit pay system, whereby teachers can earn up to an additional $1,000 each year for receiving an outstanding evaluation. The association has stated the merit pay system is demeaning and divisive. While we feel there are sound arguments to be made on both sides of this issue, we have listened to the association and have agreed to eliminate the merit pay program. However, the Board is not willing to accept the notion that teachers should receive an automatic salary step increase merely because they have worked an additional year. The Board proposed that teachers maintain a basic standard of performance in order to advance a step on the salary scale. This standard includes achieving a rating of proficient in classroom management from the district's evaluation tool, a tool implemented in part with input from teachers themselves. Finally, the Board's financial proposals are not made in a vacuum. We recognize we must support our teachers and remain competitive with neighboring school districts. However, the community cannot afford to completely revamp the salary scale in one contract. RSU 22 does not have the same tax base and financial resources as the city of Bangor or Brewer. Furthermore, as a rural district comprised of four towns, two counties, and six separate school buildings, RSU 22 is one of the highest state subsidy receivers in our area. Over 68% of our budget is subsidized from the state. When our legislature does not fully fund general purpose aid for education, which they have never done, despite being mandated to do so in 2004, the failure to do so, the negative impact of that hits our district especially hard. Unfortunately, for 2016-2017, we anticipate losing approximately $325,300 in general purpose aid from the state. Despite that news, we remain committed to the proposal that we have made to the teachers. On behalf of the school board, I wish to assure the community that the Board is working diligently and listening, working diligently towards a negotiated agreement that is fair to the teachers, the taxpayers, the community, and our children. The Board also wishes to extend its appreciation to all its teachers and staff who work so hard to make education at RSU 22 a success. With that, we would like to move to the agenda, which is time that we typically hold for people who desire to address the Board. If you would like to address the Board, we'd ask that you come to the podium and state your name. And I will remind, I should have said this at the outset, the town has started recording the meetings again, which is welcome news. This is the first one that's been done in a while, and so the camera that you see there in the podium is for that reason.
Hello, I'm John Armond. I have children in the second and the fourth grade. Before joining the University of Maine, a couple of years ago, I worked in private industry for 28 years. I've been managing professionals for about 20 of those years. I want to make a comment about retention. I've heard anecdotally that there were, what, 65 departures from the district last year? And I'm curious how that compares to a benchmark, how that rate of attrition compares to a benchmark. My experience in private industry, when I was a manager, I was held responsible for a record of, you know, strong retention of my people. So I'm curious how that compares to a benchmark or a goal for staff retention. I'd like to thank the teachers for not withholding their services, not striking and holding the needs of the children first, but I'm concerned that a lot of our best teachers are voting with their feet and really concerned for that. So my question is about retention and what the benchmark is and how we compare to other districts. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I think it's 64 in the last two years.
The spreadsheet I presented to the Board approximately a month ago showed that over the last three years, we've had 64 faculty members leave RSU 22. I do not have any statistics as to how that compares to other districts. So in the last three years, we've had a total of 64 faculty.
Including retirements?
Yes. That's all including retirements, higher paying jobs, relocation, et cetera.
And can I just add, because I've said this before, but certainly the group is larger this time around, we want to retain the best as well, and we actually have put in our strategic plan for the district to work and look at retention and how we can capture and recruit high-quality teachers. So certainly, if you have an interest in being part of that discussion, I encourage you to express that desire and would love to have community input on that.
Additional comments? The podium is open, please, for anyone who'd like to speak.
I'm Josh Lawrence, and I'm a parent of a couple of, well, a few kids in RSU 22. I just want to say, you know, as a parent, it's really good to hear that there is an interest in disseminating the information to the rest of the community about the Board's objectives and the rationale for the negotiations that have happened so far. And so I'm really looking forward to future discussion about that and hearing about perhaps what else can be done to bridge that gap. I just felt really compelled to say something again because, Karen, what you just said about being interested in retention, I'm looking around and I'm thinking, well, clearly, there's a good strategy for dealing with retention, and we have all of these people here who can give you a solution tonight. It's not, we need more ideas about how to increase retention. I think it's like, ask everybody here, what do we need to do to increase retention? Well, there's probably a lot of steps to do it, but one of them is starting off by really addressing this equity issue, and it's part of the strategic goal. And I, it's great to hear Niles talk about the increase in the numbers and percentages. It was also shared, the graphs that we're looking at step by step, year by year for, you know, that was a bachelor's level teacher, that's not everyone, but if one just looks at the graph, it's clear still after three years that RSU 22 teachers are earning less across the board, basically, except for maybe year 24 and 25. And so, one of the first places to really address this is to come together, I think, and just figure out this piece. What's equitable, what's fair? I mean, even in the districts of Belfast and areas outside Bangor, it doesn't look so good on paper. So, I think we already have part of the solution. We don't need to recruit more people to look at the retention issue. They're here, they can tell you what they want. And I think the challenge is put a plan together and then let the districts vote on it when the budget comes through. Because ultimately, it's the people of the entire district that need to, you know, agree that the budget's gonna pass. But in the meantime, put something together that's really a collaborative effort and hopefully there's gonna be more talk about how that can happen. And so I'm really looking forward to hearing that. Thank you.
Thank you, Josh. Anyone else?
Good evening, members of the Board, members of the public, fellow teachers who have been working for 182 days now without a contract. On RSU 22's website appears the following message from our superintendent. "We are committed to the optimal learning for all students, consistently seeking ways to improve. If you ever have comments, suggestions, or questions, email me at arlyons@rsu22.us or call me at 207-862-3255. Also on the RSU 22 website is a button labeled 'Let's Talk.' If you were to click on the 'Let's Talk' button, this is what you will see. In an effort to better communications, RSU 22 is deploying 'Let's Talk.' 'Let's Talk' embodies our commitment to listening and responding with care." Now, these two messages certainly suggest that you are committed to listening to your constituents. But many of us are beginning to suspect that at least for some of you, your commitment is perhaps more form than it is substance. Because for weeks, teachers and members of the community have been saying the same things to you about our contract. We have said the same things to you over and over, and it doesn't appear that you hear us. But trusting that you are truly committed to listening, I want to add my concerns to those voiced by Ambrosia Noyes two Board meetings ago. First, regarding the instrument that is used to control our salaries, who advances on the salary step and who does not, and second, how that instrument is being deployed. The instrument that you have chosen to use to evaluate us, the Marzano instrument, is over 40 pages long. It includes 60 indicators of teaching proficiency. In the weightiest of the instrument's four domains, classroom strategies, and behaviors, there are 41 indicators the teachers are supposed to demonstrate every class, every day, regardless of whether they fit our teaching style. And according to your most recent contract proposal, if a teacher receives either a zero or a one on any one of those 41 indicators during the single formal observation done by that teaching's building administrator, that teacher will be denied his or her salary step increase for the following year. His performance on the other 40 indicators can be stellar, but it doesn't matter. You want to allow 40 to outweigh one. One of all kinds of problems with that proposal is that we teachers don't know from one year to the next which of the documents indicators you have decided to count the most. We don't know because every year since Marzano was adopted, the administration's priority for which indicators should be the most important have changed. Your priority has not been the same twice. You are asking us to accept a contract that ties our pay to our ability to hit a moving target in the dark. Is that a model that you honestly believe demonstrates respect for teachers? Is that the kind of model you would want to work under? You would want your spouse to work under, your children to work under? And there's more. You maintain that you have removed merit pay from the contract negotiations. Verbally, that's true. On paper, perhaps, it's gone, but functionally, it's still on the table. In order to earn our salary step increases, our pay is tied to our performance on Marzano. Functionally, because our proficiency is tied to our evaluations by a flawed instrument, we are still tied to performance-based pay. Call it merit pay, call it performance-based pay, it's pay tied to a flawed evaluation instrument. In order to move ahead now onto our negotiated salary scale, we are required by you to prove that we are exceptionally proficient at the indicators included in at least one of the evaluation instruments domains. Here is just a partial list of what we have to do in order to document our proficiency in the area that affects our performance ratings the most. We are required to gather and keep records of our evaluations of individual lessons and units. Gather and keep evidence of the effects of specific classroom strategies and behaviors on specific categories of students. We're required to provide written analysis of specific causes of success or difficulty with these specific classroom strategies. Develop written professional growth plans with specific measurable goals, action steps, manageable timelines, and appropriate resources. Chart our progress toward our goals using established action plans, milestones, and timelines. All of these things and more, 56 more. The language alone is enough to make your eyes blaze over, and it's impracticable. For example, how do I document instances that I follow the rules? Do I take a selfie of myself in the hall at 7:55 in the morning showing that I'm where I'm supposed to be, doing what I'm supposed to be doing, when I'm supposed to be doing it? How do I document positive relationships with students? How do I document a smile, a hug? A student who says to me after a field trip to a trial, "Now I understand what due process means. Now I get it, Mrs. King." There are things about teaching that simply can't be quantified. We know that, we all know that. But under your latest contract proposal, if we fail to quantify the unquantifiable, we're punished. And further, members of the Board, there isn't enough time in the day to gather, organize, and file all of this information on top of the truly important information the teaching requires us to work with. And in case I think I'm exaggerating, let me tell you this. By the time I get up at 5 o'clock in the morning, Jason Dorr is already sitting at his desk in his classroom. By the time I roll out of the shower at 5:30, Kristen Leitheiser is in her room, sitting at her desk, doing her job. And by at 6:30, when I'm unlocking my door, most of my colleagues are unlocking theirs, a full hour before we're contractually obligated to be anywhere near the high school. Maybe you don't see that. Maybe you don't know that that's what we do, but that is exactly what we do. And why do we do it? Because if we don't come in that early, we don't have time to do the quality of work not that you expect of us, that we expect of ourselves. It's as simple as that. For us to add Marzano record-keeping to what we already do, something far more worthwhile than it, has got to go over the side of the boat. Maybe it's the time we take to write comments on student papers. Maybe it's the time we take to write a good newsletter home to a parent. It already is the flight of my colleagues who have had enough of this administration's indifference and lack of respect for us. What's the evidence of this indifference? Well, consider this. In 2014-2015, you spent $30,000 to free up building principals so that they could catch up on their evaluation write-ups. $30,000. Clearly, your building principals couldn't keep up with the demands of Marzano. Clearly, you cared enough about them to help them out, and that's right. You could have cared enough about us to spend $30,000 to help us catch up with our documentation, but you didn't do that. You could have hired a first-year teacher for $30,000 and decreased the teacher-to-class ratio in one of your elementary schools, but you didn't do that either. And that's a pretty revealing measure of this Board's priorities. And consider this as well. You don't respect us enough to allow us to choose our own professional goals. We have to choose from Marzano's menu of process goals. We would like to think that we can be trusted to determine what we need. And I know I don't need use of available technology and playing academic games. I assure you, I don't. What I need is more content, which is the heart and soul of what we do. I need to know more about the Black Power movement. I need to know more about the complex relationship between Malcolm X and Martin Luther King. I need to know more about redlining and restrictive covenants and racial steering and racial profiling and how the Vietnam War and the Civil Rights Movement and the war on poverty were intertwined, and I want to be able to say to my students, "This is how all of this is related to Ferguson, Missouri. This is how all of this is related to Flint, Michigan. This is how this relates to Black Lives Matter." But those goals have been crowded out of my life. Goals like that have been crowded out of all of our lives by a list of pedagogical behaviors written by a man who hasn't set foot in any classroom as a teacher in years, who will surely never set foot in our classrooms, and who will surely never meet my students' needs. In fact, the only way this instrument addresses contact is through an indicator called presenting intriguing and unusual information, as though not particularly intriguing and not particularly unusual information isn't worth mentioning. David McCullough, one of America's most beloved and respected contemporary historians, says, "Knowing the subject is important, because if you don't know it, you can't love it." But beyond that, McCullough says, "You can't love what you don't know." And I want to know more about what I love so that I can make my students love it. And I promise you, you want them to love what I teach because it's what keeps the wheels of a democracy moving. All of this would be frustrating and demoralizing enough even if this model were being deployed fairly. But the evidence says that it is not being deployed fairly. Ambrosia said that she could speak only from her own experience. Me too. And my experience shows that Mr. Lyons cannot be trusted to make fair, unbiased decisions about who to reward, who to punish, who to hire, and who to fire. Why do I say this? Because in the summer of 2013, my husband, David King, was fired after 44 years of loyal distinguished service to this district. And everyone knows he was not fired because he was a poor teacher. He was fired because Mr. Lyons and my former principal, Rui Yaley, decided that he was too old to keep around. In June of 2013, I begged Mr. Lyons and this Board not to reduce our social studies department by another position. I was ignored. The taxpayers of our three towns voted to restore funding to the budget for David's position that Mr. Lyons had cut. Mr. Lyons and the Board ignored the taxpayers. I wrote letters on David's behalf to members of this Board, begging them to stop what I did. I came to Board meetings and publicly begged for his job. Only one Board member heard me. I started out that summer by saying sometimes good people can make terrible mistakes, and I was sure that that was what was happening. But by August, after literally hundreds of letters and emails and phone calls had poured into the superintendent's office on my husband's behalf, most of which were never answered, most of which were never answered, attesting to David's excellence, it was clear that Mr. Lyons and Mrs. Yaley were not good people making bad decisions. They were coldly and calculatingly and illegally driving a good loyal employee for his profession. And I stood up at a Board meeting in August that summer and I said that. Until that point, my own evaluations in all the years that I had taught in this district had been uniformly excellent. But all of a sudden, they weren't. I wasn't teaching any differently. I hadn't adopted any radical new teaching strategies or abandoned any successful ones. But in the hands of Richard Lyons and Rui Yaley, the Marzano instrument said that I was no longer excellent. I wasn't even competent. I was emerging. Not only ineligible for merit pay, but one step closer to walking the same road that David was forced to walk, the road that cost him his salary, his position, and his profession. The same superintendent who did these things to David and me is the same one now saying to us all, "Trust me." His assistant superintendent, his curriculum coordinator, and many members of this Board, some of whom are on the Board's negotiations team, who supported those actions, are the same ones now saying, "You can trust us." You are asking us to trust our livelihoods to a broken instrument and a broken superintendent. I am not persuaded, and if you look around, you'll see that many of us are no more persuaded than I am. Hear me. This faculty will not accept performance-based pay, however it's called, under any circumstances. We will not accept it. Your communities are bravely concerned about what faculty flight is doing to their children's education. You are getting the crystal-clear read on the pulse of these communities that Mr. Lyons and Let's Talk says you want. So please, do what you say you're committed to doing. Please listen. Please show us that you hear what your community and faculty are telling you and act on it.
I want to make a couple of comments. I appreciate what Mr. King sent us and the opinions. I do want to correct two statements she made. I'm going to ask Mary and Reagan to help me. Number one, the Marzano model has 62 or 63 elements. Would you synthesize that to 22 or 23? Is that correct, Mary? Where's Reagan? Reagan, is it 22 or 23 that the spark has identified?
The total number of elements does exist. They are divided by domains. We initiated this program by having priority elements that were determined to be critical factors that should be potentially more prominent or practiced as people were learning the program. Now, we have opened it up so that there is opportunity for teachers to be rated in any of those elements during an observation. There are 41 that would be observed in a typical observation. It is not the case that those should all be evident at any one time nor in any one day. We see the elements that are prominent and rate those.
And the formal rating is not per element, and it's declared by the formal rating per domain. There are four domains, and that's the rating, not all four, not all 43 elements. So I want to clarify that. Thank you. 193?
193. At the present time, roughly what number would not receive affective because of the rating system? Roughly?
I need to ask Clarif, when you say the rating system, meaning...
Well, that's proficiency.
Proficiency? Roughly, Josh?
Roughly.
I would say five or six.
Number... 110 percent.
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you.
It's not the intent of the board to get into a debate tonight. I hope that we have opportunities to perfectly discuss on the road on a lot of these issues. I think there's a lot of conversation that could be had, for sure. But I still want to offer the floor to people in the audience who would like me to speak.
Um, Tommy Almatercer, I'm a former teacher. I think I'm still a teacher. Sorry to get rid of that. I just want to say about Marzano, I've been reading some things about it and all his studies. There are many studies about Marzano, and they've all been done mostly by Marzano. So, it's a flawed system. Florida did, you know what their education is like, their public education. And if you just look at it, it's insanely convoluted. I guess that's all I want to say is, and his books are rarely reviewed by other people in education.
At this time, though, Niles, I would ask Mary, I'm going to put Mary on the spot. Mary, we had a meeting, we had an education meeting tonight, and we talked about the Marzano model, where we actually corrected a comment made in earlier in the meeting. Would you address that for the benefit of the board, please?
Yes. There had been some discussion about whether or not Dr. Marzano was still associated with Learning Sciences, which is the company that houses eye observation. And so I've had several conversations with people at the company, as well as emails, and they are very concerned that there was some allegation made that they, he's not associated with them. He isn't, he... They're very worried about, they want to know who the individual had spoken to at the company. Coincidentally, today on my curriculum leader, Lister, there have been people talking about moving toward using eye observation and the Marzano model. From fellow curriculum coordinators, I saw posts from 10 people, and every single one of them felt that it was a good instrument.
Thank you, Mary.
I am Sarah Noback from parent. And you said that you welcome communication, but I have written a couple of times now to every board member. I only heard back from one, so I wrote again. I heard back from three more. To me, that's not open communication. I didn't ask for negotiation information. I asked for my concerns to be addressed. Didn't happen. As far as communication, Mr. Lyons, I was working at the concession stand the other day for our students. We got donations, we stood on our legs, we sold items for our Hamlet School students. You were walking by with the town selectmen and told them to go over and just get something for lunch. That took money out of our students' fund. I didn't appreciate the lack of communication, the lack of respect. That's our students. That was our people, our parents, our volunteers. You didn't respect us and you didn't communicate. I would communicate with you, and I wouldn't take money from the kids. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Eric Oliver. I'm a senior here. I'm not a public speaker and would not be talking if I didn't feel so strongly about these teachers and if I hadn't learned how to speak publicly from them. So I just wanted to note that. I just wanted to add that my high school experience here has not been great, and the only thing that has really made me feel motivated to come to school are some of the classes that I've taken here, the teachers that are really committed to helping us if we miss, if we miss classes, if we're feeling behind. They really just care about us learning the material, and that's how I found an interest in the school and these classes. And I just wanted to say that I've taken several classes from Mrs. King. I took US History from her, Modern Global Perspectives. I'm now in my second semester of law classes from her, and I would say that she has been one of the most incredible teachers I've ever had, just so knowledgeable, so intelligent. And to hear her say that she's being rated as not even competent is so grossly preposterous that I, I just can't even believe that I just heard that. So I just wanted to voice my support for all the teachers here and all the ones that I've had up until now in other schools because they really have been the high point of my educational career, and they deserve a lot better than this.
Thank you for standing up and speaking. If there are no additional comments, we're going to move on to our agenda. We have a whole one again with two executive sessions. And thank you to those of you who came out tonight and spoke. Next on the agenda, under my board chair, who actually turned air a little bit here, it's the time of year where we begin the annual evaluation process of the superintendent, and there is a document that I know that's going to be passed around digitally to everyone in the board, I believe a hard copy is...
Yes, everybody should have gotten a hard copy of that in their package tonight, just for the evaluation of the superintendent's schools. Last year, we had a great deal of success with electronic copy. Yes, a lot of you are able to get a hard copy back to the superintendent's office. So I've asked Rick to have Gloria send each of you a electronic copy that you can fill out and email back to Gloria. I'd like to have those before next Friday, if possible. I'm going to get together with the committee of the other board members and pull the responses and evaluations and just compile all those to present to Rick. We'll actually have an opportunity before that to sit down as a board without Rick and just discuss, you know, discuss the evaluations. Right, and we'll identify later in the meeting who you believe that would like to help with that process.
Two or one for each town.
Yes.
Is there someone left for you, Gloria?
Uh, Gloria's done it. Gloria will get it.
You guys are watching, right? We should have... This is a confidential process?
Yes. I find, I think, non-compilative, you can send them to the board by...
And I did have a question. So, was the process presented to our superintendent when it started, obviously? So if you're aware about the timelines of what you're supposed to do? Well, I noticed, actually, we had quite a conversation about this this year, looking at the timeline of what the process is. Some of the milestones were in, some of the requirements were made, some of the stuff to do, but I just wondered, compared to yourself, if this was reviewed with you when we started on the process.
Don't let your own questions...
I'll be a minute's long.
What's the evaluation presented to you?
What the requirements were?